November eleventh.
November eleventh, four o'clock. Committee of the whole meeting. All order.
Roll call.
Commissioner Capigrosa. Commissioner Livermore.
Here.
Commissioner Nelson.
Here.
Commissioner Rondo.
Here.
Commissioner Steber.
Here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did you say you have any brief public comments?
Nope.
We'll go through that.
Hang in there on after last name.
Give me a pencil. Agenda. Are we okay with the agenda?
Looks good.
Consensus, yeah. Minutes. Do we have a chance to rehearse the minutes, sir?
Put them on the website, I didn't email them again. Do that.
You know. Set that aside for next week. Rule seven. Um, boiler bill. NIT dehumidifier repairs for fourteen hundred and forty dollars and fifty-four seventy cents. Questions on that? Consensus. Number eight. Brian, new water heater started leaking for twenty-six hundred eighty-nine dollars. Census.
Yep.
Yeah.
Number nine. Joel, you wanna take this one?
Insurance renewals, insurance met, we had a couple different choices. Switching to a Blue Cross Network in conjunction with like an upgrade to our existing plan was an option. The committee met a couple, two times. And it looks like switching to Michigan Public Employers Consortium. It's still a PPO, still maintains all the same benefit levels, but it has savings on the front, front end with lower premiums, and then also if we come in under, uh, we would keep the difference as well, so. We, we recommended switching, you know, switching from Blue Cross Blue Shield to MPAC.
It's a calm.
Michigan Public Employers Consortium.
Yeah, we almost switched to that one last year. They just too noodle us. There's more potential drug coverage.
Perfect, the whole of last time. Uh, so in order to get the portal set up, four, four north with like action on the portion to confirm switching to MPAC, at the very least right now, and then by next week, after a budget meeting, they can discuss.
You're saying obviously now the percentages. Any questions on that?
Looking for a vote then?
Mm-hmm, at least a switch to give the go-ahead for.
I'll make the motion to switch insurance carriers for employees. To MPAC.
I'll second that.
And roll call.
Commissioner Capigrosa. Commissioner Livermore.
Yes.
Commissioner Nelson.
Yes.
Commissioner Rondo.
Yes.
Commissioner Steber.
Yes. And that's what the whole, uh, committee recommended to. Number ten, payment move insurance.
This would be to keep it existing.
Yeah. I figure if we do put that to holders, then take our insurance and that's gonna cost even more, so. Questions on that one? Census.
Yep.
Number eleven. Twenty-four, coal payment for two retirees. About that one? Census.
Yep.
Number twelve. Attorney invoice fifty-six, two eighty-four for thirty-six hundred one or twelve dollars and eighty cents. For sheriff department charge to. No questions on that one? What's that for? Um, legal piece.
From the sheriff's, the sheriff's department.
Attorney client privilege, so we can't discuss it. So, I guess.
A lot of discussion.
I don't know a lot of discussion on that one, but consensus.
Yes.
Well, if you don't know.
I know, it's got all about, I know.
Go into closed session.
Yeah, go into closed session, discussed it in. Oh, we discussed it in.
By committee, right?
Yeah, were you in? Planets, consent?
No.
Hmm. Oh, okay. Consensus?
Yes.
Number thirteen. Yeah, this one, jurors, Mick, discuss setting tension and data sharing guardrail policy for license plate scanner.
Well, as, as far as I'm concerned, in my opinion, it violates my Fourth Amendment, right? And I had a few incidents with it, one was with my son. He, uh, got a ticket for littering, threw a bottle out the window, went down, paid his fine, he was a senior, he went up to Northern and Northern for a week or so, and cops pulled him over, took him out of the car, handcuffed him, said, you, you got a warrant against you. They took him out and threw him in jail. And it's one call, he called me, and so I, he had the receipt for it, so I called down to the district court and they said something of, well, what's, what's he doing in jail? I said, I don't know, you tell me, and then dug around and they never reported it. So my son spent an afternoon in jail, then the cops made him walk from the college back to his car, which was, I mean, from his car, from the college to his car, it was downtown Marquette. And that's what I don't like about this.
And they were using a radar reader to catch him, or they pulled him over because they read his license?
It was on his license plate, but they never recorded that he paid it.
Did they use a automated license plate reader? I doubt it.
Well, I don't know what they used, but this is kind of the same thing to me. You, I, there, there's a couple examples in here. And I would like to know exactly how long they would keep the, if you get this, uh, they record your license plate, how long do they keep that data?
That would likely be up to the department.
Well, I'd like to know.
We don't even got their license plate reader out of the box yet, Captain Waldron.
I hope you keep it there.
That's, it's a good protection tool for drug interdiction.
As long as I'm concerned is, how long do we keep it? Who's it go to? And, uh, um, because right now, we, I've, uh, we have Medicare, I'm on Social Security, Medicare, we had twelve phone calls yesterday about people that had our phone number requiring about Medicare. Can these things be used that, well, you have Farm Bureau insurance right now, uh, how about if we do State Farm? And things like that. I wanna know how long you're gonna keep it. There's some of them will keep it three minutes, some of it sort of indefinite.
We haven't really figured that out yet, uh.
Before you do anything with it, I'd like to have it figured out.
It's already there.
It's already there, and it's, it's like our gun, or handcuffs, or radios, or it's any tool we have. We agree to follow the law with our tools. And we're following the law, and the last thing we would do is violate anybody's.
I'm not talking about you, Todd.
No, 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 our, my, my department, speaking for my department.
I'm not talking about that. What I'm talking about is the data where it's stored, and how long is it stored there? Do you understand what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying.
That's how the globalists tend on taking things over.
The who?
The globalists.
Wait, where, who are the globalists?
Where you been for the last year?
I, I think I'm not reading the same thing you're reading.
The globalists are going to do with these things in, in credentia- or incidentally, little at a time, they're gonna have where you do, where you go, what you did. I think we've been in.
So.
They can do the same thing with your cell phone. They can tell where you shot your deer by a paint. That's why I don't have a cell phone.
Who's the thing?
Uh, the DNR.
The D.
The government, the DNR.
That without a warrant, Fourth Amendment, no warrant shall issue except.
Except they got you alongside of the road until you got a warrant for you and it ain't your, you, you're not going to do it.
That, that was the district court that screwed your son.
Oh, yeah, for that.
That wasn't the police, they just, they just read the warrant.
They, they're just gonna read the dang license plate number.
Well, it's no different, that means they're not there with a GoPro and a computer.
There's things on here where, uh, they said out of a million people, forty-seven are actually used for something. Forty-seven out of a million.
There's a lot of cars on the road, those forty-seven.
There's a lot of people being inspected that shouldn't be.
What?
I'm giving you my opinion.
I understand your opinion, I just don't think that there's a right that's being violated here.
We don't read the place, they don't read the place. It shows us, it's like looking at a brown door and a blue door, it's gonna capture that picture, we're looking for a blue door, well, there's our blue door.
I'm not talking about just, Todd.
No, 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 where's all, where's it all, where's all gonna be stored? Captain Waldron would be, he's off on ankle surgery, he would absolutely be the one that we need to sit down because we'll probably look at the retention policy, him and I, and go through it, uh, it's much like our, uh, voice recordings, we get on nine-one-one, we save everything for thirty days. I'm not sure what our retention phase will be.
Right, as far as the sensitive data that's being held by the sheriffs or, or law enforcement, this is like way low as far as sensitivity is concerned. I mean, we have victims, addresses in police reports, we have social security numbers in front of the court documentation. We have things that are far much more sensitive than this being held by the departments in this building. And they all adhere to the various, uh, whatever policies that, that govern their particular area of expertise, but, um, you know, and I'm sure that there will be a data-driven policy here, but as far as I'm concerned, the, the information that's gathered belongs to the sheriff and by extension, the county voucher and a funding mechanism, but, um, it's, I don't see, you know, I'm trying to think of how all this can legally or illegally be used. Not without us getting sued, that's, that's why I always come, I always come to a, to a guidepost where it's like, oh man, we can't do that, and we're gonna get sued. We can't do that, and we're gonna get sued, just like we can't put handcuffs on someone without probable cause, without getting sued.
This was something that, when Mick had come to us, and I give you a lot of credit for it, you were, uh, you were outspoken and you were proactive about getting more patrols and getting out combating the drug problem with the kids and getting help in schools and the kids, I give you a lot of credit for that because it helped. The board made some movement because you sort of got us going on that. Well, this is another tool that will allow us to fight that drug interac- interdiction and that the people running drugs into our community, this is another tool that we can use, you might say, on our tool belt, that can help protect our kids, and, uh, if we get a child abduction case, we got Amber Alert, this is something that could come into play, you know, we have zero, zero, zero intentions of, uh, using this for anything what it's intended to do, and that's to help us interdict drug trafficking and to, uh, keep kids safe.
Well, I, I know all that, Todd. Wha- what I'm saying is, where is this data going and how long does it stay in there, and when does it get wiped out? And what do they do with it? I, I've got another, did you guys read this from Michigan State or Michigan?
I read it.
Okay. And the one paragraph on the second page in talks, privacy, and it says state police reporting one point seven million scans between nineteen, or two thousand nine and two thousand eleven, point zero five percent red led to arrest. So you have one point seven million people. When you break that down, that ain't a hundred. Now, all the, and you're, this is, I, I paid for that license plate, all that thing, they said forty percent of the time they read them wrong. Or ten percent.
I think your questions though can get answered at a different meeting because Captain Waldron's not here. Come, we haven't opened the box yet.
It's not out.
Yes, we don't even, yeah, we're putting horse out of the cart here, we haven't opened the packaging on it.
Why don't, why don't we get together with Captain Waldron and put together a retention policy and publish it to the board?
Yeah, hope, no, so, okay, then, if you have any questions, I think Matt can answer it.
Yeah, I understand. You know, but I don't want me sitting alongside the road handcuffed because they got the law, um, place, uh, number on the license plate.
I, I, I understand what you're saying.
And anybody else, they don't.
Yeah, I won't let them handcuff you, Nick, okay, I promise.
Unless there's a warrant.
Yeah, there's.
But that, there is an, also where a woman and her four daughters were handcuffed and laid on the ground, because it read the wrong, wrong license plate number.
Yep, I, I'm not surprised, I think that those stories are likely anecdotal, this, uh, organization, this, uh, kid, and I say kid deliberately because he's only, looks like he's nineteen years old, published this, uh, he's pretty, uh, anti-police, it looks like, um, and, uh, I'm not, uh, super into, you know, defund the police movements that this is clearly showing, so I, I prefer that we, you know, just get together with common sense on it, use the tool it's, as it's intended to be used and move forward from there.
Right.
Well, I talked to a number of people, and they're not, they're not too satisfied with that.
Okay. No, not probably, we, we are.
Just wanted to go.
It's a tool we are going to use for drug interdiction because my first and foremost duty as your sheriff is protect people from drugs and violence in this community, and if this helps us protect one child or protect one family or it helps us.
True first, Todd, you're missing the first, your first.
No, I, I understand exactly what you're saying.
My constitutional rights.
We'll, okay, we'll have Matt, Matt can answer the questions better than I can because he's, we're gonna do a retention policy, but this is a good tool to protect our community, and that's, I, I understand where you're coming from, I do understand your, your beliefs, I understand, but this is a good tool for us, or I wouldn't request it.
I mean, from a legal perspective, the liability is very de minimis. Many companies use it.
But we can put our own retention policy on there if we choose to.
Yeah, you know, and, and that probably is a good idea, like Mick says, I, I just don't know, is it, is it factory set at a sixty day or thirty day, or do we have to enter our own in there? I, I don't know because it's not even out of the box yet.
Yeah, and does it go to our own server, or does it have its own computer, or does it go somewhere out?
All this stuff, that's, Waldron's the, he's the cog behind the wheel on this.
Well, I'd sure like to know before you put it out.
Well, we will, Mick, we're not gonna, I won't rub nothing in anybody's nose, well.
Well, I know.
Yeah.
I know, it says in here, City of Ibsalana took them out.
I'm not, I'm not surprised, I don't like the police in Ibsalana.
I don't, I've never been there, yeah. I'm not a lover of, 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 uh, of, uh, uh, people taking my my, uh, constitutional rights, I do not like that, and I think we're popping up a lot of them every time we turn around.
Okay, but these are the defund the police kind of stuff, these guys who write these papers, you're not that. No, I'm not. You're a pro, you're a pro sport law.
Young people are very developed pieces on this, and it's extraordinarily one-sided, and then you get to the legal aspect of it, the Supreme Court has not yet decided. Well, no, duh, they, they haven't because there's nothing to decide yet on this, and, you know, there's some really nuanced legal aspects here, like the, the right to privacy, the existence of the right to privacy. And there, the legal scholars on both sides to debate the right to privacy every day, the word privacy isn't really mentioned in our constitution. So you have to, uh, you know, I believe in right to privacy, but we have to develop the case law on it, so.
If I may, uh, Todd, I'm assuming, you know, we've got a committee meeting to begin in the next month. Yeah, yeah. Right, I think that'd be reasonable to have something. Absolutely. I respect what you're asking, Mick, I really do, I know what you're asking and I understand it and I respect it, but I think Matt can give us questions a little more thorough than I can because he's more, he's our guy on this, he's our go-to guy on this, he comes to me and says, hey sheriff, we got a good tool here that can be, that can combat drugs, we gotta do better, we gotta do better, and let's do it. I haven't seen, I haven't put my hands on it yet, so if I found out it was violating rights or something that I thought was wrong, we wouldn't use it.
Like I said, if it gets to where, like I, like I have with Medicare right now, or Medic- Medicare, yeah, Medicare, and they get the license number, they didn't get my phone number, and pretty soon they're harassing me because I went through your camera.
The insurance company is doing that?
Don't.
What if somebody got a hold of all that?
They're doing it right now, if you're my age and on Medicare, they're doing it.
What if somebody got a hold of all the records in front of the court? I tell you, that'd be much worse, but I've never heard that question being asked in this room. What if somebody got a hold of all the victim information in my victim's advocate office? Somebody could die because of that.
That's right.
That question not asked right now, you know?
Oh, I'd ask it.
Trust me, we do, we do the best in the region when it comes.
Well, you had better, I mean.
Right, but I'm saying.
That's the, what I'm kind of getting at here.
Let's, what?
I want, I want to know who it goes to and where it goes, and when, when's our committee meeting in December?
First Tuesday. First Tuesday in December, Mick, will you meet the committee meeting because I'll make sure Captain Waldron too? It'd be the admin committee. Okay, the admin committee, and I'll bring Captain Waldron along and hopefully. At eleven. We. Thanks, Mike. So it's the first Tuesday at eleven? Uh, no, because we, we only moved last time because of election day, because our, our clerk was a button for punishment.
But I like that. I'm, I'm just protecting my rights.
I got it, I get it, I get it. Thank you. You're protecting all of our rights, and I, that's why I respect it, but we'll have answers for you.
Okay.
You might not like them, but we'll have answers for you.
Okay, done discussion on thirteen?
Yep.
Fourteen.
So I, I followed up, uh, yeah, it did not include the Title IV billing, if it did, that would have been fantastic. Sixty thousand, it ends up being twelve thousand eight four.
Oh, yeah, I have that.
Three years.
I think.
Yeah.
Why? Change my recommendation. Because that was the caveat, yes, if it's included, it's great, much lower price. But there's no sense paying more for the same services, and we're already getting.
We're asking at five, I think, in the group, you're seeing that.
Yeah.
Consent not to go with this? Well, or stay as this, we're already. Okay, so fourteen, we think is actually, yeah. We have consent to just abolish that idea?
Take it off it.
Yeah.
Say, open it on next week's, open it on next week's agenda.
Right. It was a thought, we might be able to save his money, but it was not, so. Number fifteen, state police facility use agreement, and then to specify rooms and term. Commitment. I have questions. That, uh, do you need that to be that right away, or can that be next?
Next week's okay, I don't know if we're discussing it right now, like you dropped something out.
Um, what were we thinking? Just put it down, three year, what are we gonna do, or? How many year do we wanna?
My, my first thought was, if we're gonna set this month of years, might as well do it full and lock it in right with our.
That way the next board, if it's all something different, they can decide what they want.
Do you know?
But I also feel like if they were all new people, are they gonna know what happened to the information, member term limits really?
Brian brought up the, he said, well, maybe you should go five, so that you buy a buffer in there for the new board to figure out what's going on before they have.
We either do it three or we do it five.
Putting things on Facebook about.
You know what they, what they'd like. Should they want.
The longest, the longest term we'll give them.
As long as they want.
I do believe that we should put in there that we will give them rooms, but I don't wanna specify these rooms. There might be someday that we wanna move something better for the county, you know, we'll give them space, but technically, it might not be that space.
Might be down here in the basement.
Keep that space, you know, cost them money, change rooms, but we're gonna do it especially in counties or states.
It's the state. The existing one doesn't specify which rooms, just that we're going to give them space.
And is that fine, is that, or do they want?
I mean, for, for like a little more stuff. So they don't have to keep switching rooms? I mean, we're gonna, once we finish all the construction, we're gonna gain two more rooms, again.
Can you commit the exact amount of time for these four rooms now, and then? I have, what, what the does? He didn't go into too much detail about which rooms would be turned around in a year or two, and the room numbers change, doesn't matter, because they're gonna, they're gonna have to send people into line in that, that room, I think that's more realistic.
Yeah, they're just gonna put lawyers from that side over this side, which I think will be the state. So state comes to know that. Um, I would say, I, I'd go at least three years, what they gonna do, if they don't like it, they, they're just gonna leave, I don't think they're gonna do that, they're happy here, we're happy there, I mean.
Minus a three.
Huh?
I compromise a three just to keep it.
Right.
That gives us three years. We're not gonna make any big changes in the rooms as we know after this, and we do have the two rooms we can fill.
Yeah.
Three years gives us the next three years to make more decisions before somebody else comes in.
And I'd like to put in there too is, uh, to be able to change with mutual agreement. So if we, yeah, that makes sense, if something happens and we mutually say, hey, we got something that's good or better than and they're happy to do it, and we're, that we can break this mutual agreement and just.
What if they open a new state police post in two years here?
I can, I can honestly tell you guys that.
I'm just saying, don't leave that option that if mutually we decide.
Yeah, there's a, then there's a ninety day clause in the existing one.
Okay.
Well, I got a suggestion. Why don't we let them do it in Trenery?
You want one out, Trenery? Because now, are they ready now?
The new moon got something in the back there, they can tip.
Just a quick, real quick follow-up on that.
Right here.
That room, them here, we have, we've grown so close with them, and I've just talked to the prosecutor, what I can't really say what we're talking about, and I won't, but they were working a very big, big case with us today that eventually, cases take a while, take some time, but it's our guys working with their guys, our girls work with their girls, our staff working together, trusting each other, respecting each other, building those bridges, having them here has provided us those opportunities uh, to.
Work better.
To work, yes, to work better, and, um, I like having their cars here, I think it's another presence of safety for the county building, having troopers in the building, you know, to, you know, having them around, and, um, I think it's a great fit for the county, I commend the county for, uh, supporting, supporting your troopers, or state police, so. It's good fit. And then, I know, I know from talking to some of the staff, there's been a couple times here, it's been very convenient that there was a trooper in the building when a potential problem came up and they were, they were able to use it, you know, so if work could get out of hand or became a a real problem. And that's true, my prosecutor and I had a potential situation not too long ago, and we had a trooper, uh, right there.
Yeah.
Just bam.
And I don't think we have to put that with either party, because we do have, like, number eight there, ninety days, but either party can just nullify it, so. I mean, we can give them, I don't care how long you give them, because we could always just say, okay, we're done, we just have to give ninety day notice, you know? Hey, so for me, that changed my idea of three years, I couldn't care less how long somebody else wants more or less.
Well, you don't want it too long, in case something comes out.
Well, as I said, at ninety days, we can always dump it anyway.
True, and anything happens, we're gonna know ninety days in advance.
I just say, we do five, so then if anything comes up after four years, we ain't gotta deal with it, right?
It's important to have some term.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, you know.
So it gets looked at every so often.
Well, that, and you don't wanna.
How's it going in years, Joe? Like you're, you're trying to set everything up in two-year terms, four-year terms, what is it, what works best for in your little?
Con- contract, longer the better, it's just, uh, it was those annuals that was just killing us, so there's something every year still, even if they're all in three, four, five, six-year rotation, there's always something that every year.
In that case, I'd be fine doing five years, we have a ninety day old, we can do it ninety days from today, you know?
Well, you gotta run it with a current sheriff term, you know, the next sheriff you have may not, may have different ideas, I don't. Well, and that was kind of the idea of the five years.
Right.
At least then they're gonna get at least ninety days notice.
At least then they're gonna get at least ninety days notice.
Yeah.
Even if there is a complete change. They're gonna at least have their buffer of ninety days, so.
That, and it gives the new sheriff, if there is one.
Oh, they're not the only one.
Nine, ninety days to see, oh, maybe this is a good thing.
Yes, absolutely, dude.
There'll be five, some consensus on this one?
Yeah. Half the way each for next week.
Consensus on five years then?
Yes, sir.
Number sixty, advise on website or internet to share the construct or the advising board. For the boards of appeal for the construction. Um, just five members. Three notes, two-year expiration.
Should bump that up, I say.
Four years.
And then, uh.
We got thrown on.
Trying to get up to eight.
Proposals.
I didn't.
You got request letters of interest.
Right, yeah. So I think for four-year terms for the, some revenues, there's some money there. And it is an, it's forty bucks a day.
It's the board of appeals for the goal.
I talked to John recently, he said he'd be interested, still John's still good.
He's not already now, yeah.
Yeah.
So it was just Roger. So the advertiser for one or does that, just open?
I think open it up.
That's only four minutes, we could get up to eight of them, I think.
Cause if somebody else wants to, they can take my.
We do it for three months, you gotta say that's enough. Whatever.
So I mean, how many years have you ever had a meeting? Cause nobody's a deal.
That's the reason, you said four years, I was like, yeah, let's do that, so we don't have to keep doing that over and over.
He have. Uh, remember we were trying to find something about enrolling control that, um. Joe wanted out.
But they could pull.
Who still has, don't want out or no?
Oh, yeah. I think Joel, he'd take, he'd be out if they want somebody to take him out. I, I was thinking of John Deese, he's retired.
I, I've never talked to him.
Well, there we go, yeah. Gotta have an office.
Probably years. Their funding commission could see the ability to send him after this month for.
Future.
Yeah.
They decided not to.
They're right, yeah.
The consensus on four-year, putting it out there.
Okay.
Consensus.
Four years, five years.
And seventeen cost saving ideas, revenue. Bringing in more money. You got one, don't you?
Uh, yeah, I got Marquette County is gonna start to host some inmates with us. Um, we developed a contract. Roughly with them. Forty bucks a day, cause we charge loose county thirty-eight. I don't wanna hammer it to another sheriff. They got housing issues up in Marquette County and, um. So potentially I was just sharing the news with Pam, that could be a potential good source of revenue for us. They originally asked us for ten beds, but we were fixing the cell block, so they brought us the first four. Um, we have four at a minimum. Right now, which it's a fifty-eight to sixty thousand dollar revenue if it continues this year. If we can get up to eight, we can have a little more revenue. I just, um. Don't exactly know where the contract's going with them right now. We got a. Lock it stone kind of thing, but we do, we are housing inmates from Marquette County also. And, uh. Could be some good revenue for us.
All I keep hearing is Aldra County has space for inmates, cause we don't have any. Isn't that a good thing?
That's good.
Well, that's a good thing. That's all I keep hearing is.
Where's our prosecutor?
Prosecutor. There's a philosophical disagreement.
I don't think so.
Between. Law enforcement and the people that actually put people in jail. So, um, we're working on it.
We're working on that.
We have, we.
I just put people in jail, law enforcement.
We charge more felonies in Eldrick County than, than our neighboring counties, certainly per capita. And, and, and high severity felonies, um, in this county are extensive as well.
Yeah.
But, um, we, the law enforcement only puts people in jail on the first night.
Yeah.
After that, it's up to somebody else.
And to Rob's benefit, to what he's saying, to show you. How good of a job his office does on this. I have troopers tell me. They wait when a dr- load of drugs are coming up from Chicago or. Downstate. To make the stop in Eldrick County, because, and not Marquette County or not Schoolcraft County, because our prosecutor will hammer them.
Right.
They're like, no, we don't want them. Let them get to Marquette County, you know, but, but they will and, and buggers do it to me every time. Hey Sheriff, you made another stop in your county. Just want our prosecutor, but Rob's doing a great job and prosecuting felonies and, uh. I, uh, I couldn't be happier with our office. They. Outstanding prosecutor's office we have.
We're not leaning.
You're not saving revenue sources?
I just gave you sixty grand, Sees.
Uh, the district court is, um, seems to be taking more of a pro-law enforcement attack on, uh, drunk driving reimbursement. Recently, the district court has vocally changed their policy on. Which funds go to the prosecutor's office and when. We don't, we don't earmark the funds, so I ask for a straight reimbursement on every case. Sometimes I up it if there's stupid stuff that I gotta deal with, but. And that's now the district court's ordering that and they're paying that before they do fees. So that goes right into our general fund, that's ten thousand a year.
Nice.
Nice.
Standing.
You were talking about that last meeting, weren't you?
Yeah.
I've talked about it often on my frustration.
Trying to get it.
In Schoolcraft County, they take that money and it goes directly back to the prosecutor's office for special projects.
Yeah, for like CIs and.
Right, I don't sense, I don't necessarily, if I need money, I'll just come, I'll come ask you guys. So I, I don't, I think we're doing a good job with that.
Oh, yeah.
Well, it comes out to about twelve thousand five hundred dollars per bed.
Okay, so it comes up to things.
If we do get, cause that's my, we gotta pay for food. We gotta pay for the meals.
Yep.
So you take that ten dollars a day out, two bucks a meal plus snacks, whatever it comes out.
Yeah.
Just roll it up ten dollars, it's at least twelve, maybe you might say thirteen thousand per bed. So if we can get. Ten beds. From Marquette, that's a hundred and thirty grand a year.
We're gonna, and Commissioner Seabriggs worked with us on that project till we've kept him. Uh, a brass, we discussed it this morning already with him and. It's a good project as long as we get good inmates. If they send us bad inmates, they're going back to Marquette County.
They don't stay long.
They don't stay long. Return the sender. Yeah. Oh, oh, the two years are looking.
Any other, any unfinished business? Nothing. Financial appropriations. That's Pam.
Uh, we're just paying the bill, the one convention facility tax to North Care, that's the only bill we have. Under appropriations.
Consensus?
Thank you.
Any board bills?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Mark approved on my, my packet.
Oh, I did those.
Yeah.
Mark approved.
I was saying, I wasn't on that, but I said, I was your.
I sort of like you guys, so, cause the prior board, Mick was on the prior board. I would get hammered at those board bill meetings, Mick. You guys are like, a lot more trusting, I appreciate it.
Went through every bill.
Yeah.
We took a drill. Yep, turn it over and stamp it.
Well. Now we just look through every one of them and then stamp ones.
Right. Consensus?
We can go back to the old one.
That's fine. An absolute report for all funds.
That's good.
Any questions on that? Census?
Yep.
Any resolutions? Resolutions. Committee reports. Like any committees?
Uh, no, we've gone over everything that, what we dealt with in the committees this month has. Already been. Laid out for.
I think I had, we had a. Cam committee. That's nothing really going on because we gotta elect. More officials in there to have a forum. That'll be coming up in December twenty-eighth, I believe. I can't remember. And then I had, we had a, um.
Q pad.
Two pad meeting.
It was the anniversary, so.
Every one of us.
Been four, seven years since.
Long time.
Yeah. So we just gonna went over the history of it and where it all came and passed our bylaws and.
You have anything, Mick?
No, I don't.
Kelly?
Didn't make it all of my head.
We had our first materials management meeting. Um, I'll be honest, I don't know if maybe it was because I was part of Q pad during some of it and I was really involved before. It felt like, um. They really didn't know what they were doing or why they were there. So we have a long way to go with the other counties to get them. Kind of all on the same page. I didn't feel like I had as many questions. They were, you know, asking questions about like what we were doing and what was next. So. I think as Eldrick County as a board, we had a lot of questions and we got them answered. Whereas they just kind of went with it and now they have a lot of questions at the meeting, so. Um. We have another meeting, I think in two weeks, we set up another one.
Right, uh. You from Melrose, so, are they there?
Um, I think I was the only one from Eldrick County.
Good.
So then we did a poll to try to get as many people there as possible. So now we're working on the terms of like the bylaws and how many people need to be there and everything, so. It was kind of a mess of a meeting, but I felt confident in it, so that was nice. We're good.
When you get two vocal ones? When they started electing.
Oh, no, I don't know. I was sitting there like. I'm like, no. But I, I was really. Happy about how much we were involved and how many questions we asked as a board, that when I went there. Some of the questions the other counties were asking, I was like, you didn't know that already?
Yeah.
So. Kudos to us for being on top of it, so. Keep asking me questions and I'll take them there.
Any correspondents?
The letter asking for commitment, uh, four dollars dues to up cap. We need, everybody agreed, it was already in the budget, everyone just. Uh, and then the Department of Treasury, they accepted our. Submission to opt out of the designated. On the assessor. There's two resolutions, one. Protecting the. And the other opposing, uh, Michigan. Bills eight seventy-five through seventy-seven. That's it.
They've got one from Pennwind Industries as well, but.
They're not printing it up?
It's in the packet.
Oh.
Must not print it up. That's the guy whose card I gave you.
Sorry, I didn't print myself.
He needs to get in front of you guys before. We agreed.
Well, it's the plastification.
Yeah, that's that, and, you know. I know Dickinson County is really, really interested in it, but.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Someone's on it. What comments?
Uh, like, I put some. I keep going back and forth, M R extension through Mac runs a new practitioner school. It's like four online sessions and then an in-person session next month. I finally think I decided I'd like to go to it, so.
Yeah.
It's a hundred and twenty-five dollar registration fee and the first part I can do throughout, throughout this month of November, I can just go online and do it. Or you can do like a live webinar, I'll do recordings. And then in-person meeting all day on the tenth of December in Escanaba.
I went to the one last, well, two years ago. I went to the one up there and you're lucky, cause you have some, but.
And I did, I might, I wasn't sure just because of, I was like.
But even I.
But they keep talking about, you know, even people that come back time to time.
It's all good, nice. It's nice, cause you have all of the commissioners from the other counties come and you kind of get a face in the room to some of the other counties, cause you're going to meet them at other meetings, so.
Yeah.
I definitely am.
That'd be.
I even thought about going again.
There's a book on my desk up there. Take it, that's what you got. Yeah, I got one at home.
Okay.
I think that was Kathy Bowens.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, a big book.
But it is worth going to.
I feel good about my decision to wanna go there.
There you go. It is. Most of them are.
Yeah. Yeah, the fact that I don't have to go downstairs in the meetings.
Yes.
Yeah, ours is at the landmark in Marquette, the one I went to.
Yeah, this one's gonna be a bait.
That's when I would bait, so. Just because your lions won, don't mean you have to be late.
Those are very late night. Or early, early warning. That's really it for me.
Um, just wanna thank all veterans out there. That's all I got.
Jesus, so.
I like to, uh. The use with the, uh, airport, you have a set, uh, meetings? Had a person ask me.
We, uh, well, every month. Part of the, is it eight? No, it's part of the facilities, maybe eight o'clock, yeah.
Eight o'clock when?
First Tuesday.
We're here.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Kelly, any comments?
Um. We got through election, just. Thank you so much, everybody, we got through it. That was a lot, um. I know there was some craziness, um, also, thank you all the veterans, absolutely, and. I'm just excited, another four years, guys.
What's your comment?
Uh, it's been a rough week.
I'm talking on his lines, Dean and God will be here for Aldra.
Yeah. No, I told her about my car Saturday night and, uh. Hit check the gram rain, I just got there.
Busy time here, isn't it?
Yeah. Well, anyway, I'll, I'll have some next time. After I re-cruised.
Staff comments?
Glad to have gotten through elections and then we're gonna finish up hopefully tomorrow for campsers. And, uh. Then I'm gonna go, December decided to do one little mini conference to. They're gonna go some follow-up elections. Training. Uh, otherwise, yeah, yeah, a lot of budget meetings coming up and. Thank you for the insurance portion and we'll, we'll finish that part up, hopefully be done. December meetings for you.
Good to have that.
Yes, I am also glad election is over. Congratulations, everyone, one. Now back to work. And Joel said budget meetings are coming up, lots of them, so. Hopefully it'll go smooth.
Sure. Just kudos to Joel and Pam and Rob and all the county officials that worked with me on this current election. Um, we had some issues around the county. They were to deal with and we had a good plan in place between the prosecutor's office, ourself and state police and Joel's office. And I know Joel was under a lot of stress. And, um, he, uh, he did an amazing job in his first election and. Congratulations, you did an amazing job. Again, Eldrick County pulled out a great election and we, no problems and. We're a shining example, hopefully for the rest of the country to follow. I tried to stop by this once.